Call the meeting to order at six thirty. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the great
Roll call please.
Here.
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 Present.
There.
Present.
Present. Um, first item on the agenda is mayoral reports. Um, first we have several holidays and items happening the first part of June. Um, first is the announcement of Pride Month. Today is uh, Flag Day. Uh, Father's Day is this weekend, so make sure you say Happy Father's Day and um, have a good Father's Day to those of you in the room that are fathers. Um, it is Juneteenth next week. And uh, as promised last year, at the first meeting in June, we will reaffirm the um, welcoming and inclusive pledge that was first passed by the village in two thousand seventeen. We also have um, Logan Lennon here. Logan? Alright, I was looking for a seventh grader, he was a little too big for a seventh grader, right? So we have Logan Lennon here, who is the uh, seventh grade long jump champion. So he's a student at Grass Lake School in Antioch. He double medaled at the recent IE SA Class One A and Two A State Track Meet. Um, despite having a shortened track season due to weather and frequent cancellations, he qualified his sectionals and upheld the responsibility as a single representative for Grass Lake School in the state competition that made up of more than two thousand athletes. Previously ranking fourth in the state last year, Lennon showed up with determination to beat his previous accomplishments. He succeeded by ranking first in seventh grade boys' long jump. He came in second place in the seventh grade boys' hundred meter dash while also beating his previous record. So we want to say congratulations. Any of you from up here, please, cheerleaders are here, I think they're gonna cheer, so if you wanna like, run and show us how far you're going. And actually, that guy right there said he was a good long jumper, so maybe I'll make you guys go on the parking lot. Battle it off, but. How far was the jump? Yeah, come up here, come up to the mic, come up to the microphone and tell us. Yeah.
My jump was seventeen feet and seven inches at state.
There's no way you can beat that.
Teenage just baby. Yeah, so uh, um, obviously eighth grade then, which high school do we go to?
Uh, planning, I think, to go to Antioch.
Okay, alright, well, we congratulate you and thank you for coming in tonight and um, appreciate you letting us know about your accomplishments, so. Thank you. Next item on the um, Veterans Memorial Committee update. Um, we're in the process of drafting a resolution um, to make sure that the veterans group can use, to make sure, so that they can use the property of or by the Bill Brooks wetland for the um, construction of the memorial. We did see a first rendering, um, rudimentary rendering of what the memorial will look like. They're getting a little further into um, design and work with Manhart to come to a more precise drawing. So that is continuing to move along. And um, that's it for the mayoral report. Do we have any citizens wishing to address the board? Anybody signed up? Anybody need to sign up? Alright. Any of you that do not want to sit through the meeting, that are here just, you know, to celebrate, you can don't participate in the meeting. I I will not be offended. Alright, I'll say. Congratulations again. Alright, thank you. Um, consent agenda, any requests to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Not entertain a motion in the second to approve. Don't move. Motion trustee Bluth there, second trustee Pierce. Roll, uh, roll call please.
Yes, oh, I'm jumping, jumping down here. Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. I'm still getting used to who's. Um, alright, next item is uh, item number three on the regular agenda, consideration approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of four hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars and four cents. Do I have a motion in the second?
Don't move, second.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Berman, any discussion? Roll call please.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of ordinance amending sections one point four, one dash four dash five, one dash four dash six of the Antioch Village Code regarding liaisons of the board of trustees, ordinance number twenty-three dash six dash eleven, and entertain a motion in the second, waiving the second reading.
I'll make the motion and wave the second reading.
Motion trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Any further discussion on this? Alright, roll call please.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Five voting yes, one voting no, motion carries. Um, administrators report, Mr. Kind.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, we're having our pre-construction meeting tomorrow for the park, so kind of an important milestone. So, and all contractors here, I should have more information to share about start date right now, anticipating start date after the Fourth of July. We are also uh, to uh, we're starting the planning for a groundbreaking school. So we're getting the list of attendees that will need to be there. And um, we're thinking that we'll probably, the construction may start a little bit, mobilization will be happening before that, but we're thinking the uh, last week of July, um, is probably when we're gonna try to schedule that. Uh, Williams is still proceeding on some of the space needs analysis for Public Works, so we're anxiously waiting uh, who are drawing for the Public Works facility. Um, I don't know that a whole lot has happened on the village. Village Hall building, so. Another important milestone, Grim Road. Um, after the early two years of county, state, and then federal approval, um, the Grim Road has finally been declared an FAU route, federal aided movement route, which now enables us to apply for grants. So it, it, we did not anticipate it would take nearly two years to get that road. You may remember a resolution passed about two years ago designating it as an FAU route. We finally got that word, so very happy to hear that. We're proceeding on uh, property acquisition. We had requests out there, a couple more requests will be going out to some of the property owners that we are weeks right away from, so work proceeds on that. Um, the clarifier, um, work is, the floor has completely been removed, piping has been um, installed. Um, some work may need to occur on removal of suitable material based under this slab. Reinstall some stones, fabric, and steelwork will start, but work is proceeding there. I thought the concert went really well, a lot went into that. Took an all hands on deck kind of effort here to make that happen, but I couldn't be more pleased with the outcome of that. It seemed like a very good event, joy by all, and um, I think Jim, at some point, we could do a recap on how we, how we did there, but um, safe to say we had plenty of beer left over, so. But it went really well, so it's very, very happy to see that. And I think that's all I have, and I failed to report to you prior. I'm sure you all noticed that Highway eighty-three is closed at Highway fifty and the work continues. Um, that project um, is largely a resurfacing project and signal upgrade project with some, when we get into Salem, there's a little more pedestrian facilities they're gonna create, crosswalks and things near that school. Um, but it's, their site says that they'll be done in the fall. I, I'd be amazed if they are, but um, you're gonna see further closures as they move southward. Um, but yeah, that, that project does go all the way to the state line, so at some point, we will be impacted. Um, the traffic could go to one lane, we, we use that route to get to the um, the hospitals, our ambulances go that way. Um, so, fire department's aware of it. But as, as work proceeds there, I'll try to keep tabs on what's happening, report back. Meant to tell you about that last time, and then finally, I'm attending, I think I mentioned, Lake County is heading up a dispatch consolidation effort. I did throw my hat in the ring to the other financial working groups, both got selected, so I will be attending a meeting tomorrow to talk about how the new dispatch um, fees will be handled. That, that is undecided at this point, not like they think it. It would be, you know, I will tell you where I stand on it. I think it should be like an enterprise fund, pay for usage for, you know, every community involved in that, and there are many in Lake County that will be involved in that. My feeling is it should be a, you know, a fair price set to all users based on how much they utilize this, and that would be a per call basis, so. I'm gonna be trying to drive the ship that direction.
Will you, will you ask them? Ask them if there's gonna be delays like it is now, or are you calling? Are you calling, tell me, let me see what you hold.
Keep, that's a great, great point, and, and this is precisely why this effort took place, because if you were in county um, and you somehow got, you know, the system picked you up as being in Antioch, you go to Semcom, and Semcom gets transferred to county, and it, it created delays. And because there were so many different dispatch centers, um, and the borders are so irregular, I mean, they showed us a map of all these different dispatch centers and how we consolidate, and, and the goal is to, and it was probably like fifteen or sixteen different PSAPs, different colors around the county, they're gonna try to make that all one color, so there is, you know, one set of dispatchers in, in um, things can be limited, no progress.
The, the statement would be, whoever gets that call, they own that car. Doesn't transfer over to someone, some other sport.
I think the, the likelihood of it happening is gonna be many times reduced. There are, there is still, I believe, gonna be, um, it looks like there may be not every single community, so there, you know, if you're, is it Grace Lake, it's gonna keep it? Keep it different.
Yes, yeah, there's a few.
There might be a few instances in certain um, communities where that can still happen. Because not every, not, not one hundred percent of the communities are involved for it, but certainly around our, our borders, you know, everything up here in this quadrant of the county is all gone the same dispatch, so I don't think we'd be affected locally by those transfers, but it could still happen in other parts of the county where they're not consolidating. But it's, it's gonna be way better than that. But uh, I'm very interested to see what's gonna pass. So far, the funding is by grants, federal grants, um, ARPA money, county money. Um, you know, I think there may be some uh, ETSB money involved, so right, right now, it looks like construction is funded. It looks like they have the money they need to build this thing. It's just a matter of, you know, what will it cost us to be a member of this group? And what will it cost us on a per call basis? I'll be looking, looking how far as we're on it. Be happy to take any questions.
I have two quick things before you sit down that I forgot to mention. One is um, I think Michael or Jim can talk about this some other day, but we did get a notification that Sherman's Travel had a listing of the fifty best historic towns in all fifty states, and Antioch was chosen to the state of Illinois as the most historic town, so that's good news. And then um, I number thirteen on the list, um, and then let me just do one, the staff knows about this and trustees, I believe, know this, but just for the record, wanted to read a email received from Gibson Clark, who is a tour manager for Rodney Atkinson. Mayor, I wanted to reach out and thank you for having us the past weekend in your wonderful town. I told one of our crew guys on these, it was about the cleanliness and hospitality of your village, and how well things were organized. On that note, I must brag on Jim and Amy, they were absolute rock stars, and you're quite fortunate to have them on your team. Your police department was a huge help in getting Rodney from point A to point B, which is always appreciated. We hope to come back soon, exclamation point, many thanks, Gibson Clark. So I just want to thank everybody. Um, I think two sleepless nights before that, and everything went off good, so I appreciate all of our work. Went into that. That's all I had. Any questions for Jim? Luke Combs is coming next year. Next is uh, village clerk report. No reports, um, department reports, community developments. Mr. Garian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to provide the board of village update. Um, staff is currently along with the mayor, is working on a new potential business at nine-one Main Street that was previously a embroidery shop, as you know, this can take it for several months. Um, we are currently working with an existing business owner in Antioch, we have a meeting this Friday. So we continue to work on that, trying to get an exciting new occupant that's consistent with the direction this board wants to go in as making more vibrant Main Street, so I'll continue to provide a board update on that empty space. Uh, with regards to Marketplace, I have, we are in the early access plan, we're working with the um, the actual traffic engineer, Smarter City Traffic Engineer has completed a um, traffic study, there's traffic, new traffic count along one seventy-three, or they propose seventy acre development, um, which we're hoping to work with and get that going. Uh, so once uh, the traffic study is completed, submitted to IDOT, we're hoping that uh, within the next six months, we'll get some positive feedback uh, for either signalization, full signalization at Lincoln, subject to warrants, and subject to having the appropriate development, and also access on Brown Road, uh, which will hopefully um, really start a major new initiative, new development, commercial mixed-use development on the sixty-two acres, sorry, eighty-two acres, now commonly known as a marketplace. Um, consistent with that, we continue to reach out to some commercial developers of potential interest in the marketplace property. Uh, and a conceptual plan has been submitted, staffed by the developer, uh, which shows extensive, an extensive number of outlots, commercial outlots along one seventy-three. So we'll continue to try to attract uh, new commercial developers, uh, commercial developers for that development, and also, or fortunately, try to refine the plan uh, before it comes before the village board for future consideration. Um, staff is working potentially with a, a new potential commercial developer on the Parker Hanifin property, that's approximately thirteen acres at the corner of Gregory and one seventy-three. So um, I'm working with a broker on that property, so once we have a little more.
Sorry, where is that?
That's actually the Antioch Corporate Park, Gregory and one seventy-three. Corner, one outlet that's not the bones. So as you know, the Parker Hanifin was going to go to the research facility there a number of years ago. So um, we will continue to work with that realtor, and once we have more information, hopefully solidify the concept plans, we'll bring that before the village board uh, for additional information. As it relates to the Historic Preservation Commission, um, we're getting very, very close to completing our historic survey, which has been really a major, major endeavor. I think several months ago, we gave you a sneak preview of that. Uh, but we're getting, for completing our survey of properties of our Main Street, and once we have that, that will generally be completed, also we're working potentially on our first landmark. So hopefully by the end of summer, you'll see your first landmark in Antioch. Um, um, for a future consideration for the village board. Um, additionally, um, conceptually, we're also working to develop an assisted living facility, so hopefully within next month, village board will see a concept for our first assisted living facility. Uh, there's a real need for that in Antioch, there's a real market need for that. Uh, so that will be uh, along one seventy-three, identify the site uh, in the future via a confidential email to the board. Also, we met with a solar farm facility, as you know, several months ago, we um, actually passed a solar farm ordinance. And it's something that, um, we have a potential solar farm with potentially a ten million dollar investment into Antioch, which we had a good positive meeting with last week, uh, so I anticipate uh, a site plan and special use coming through across this uh, within the next month. Also, we continue to work with um, Packing House, you know, um, the previous approved cannabis use there decided they were not positioned to proceed with that building. It's uh, potentially a building that has a lot of potential, so we continue to try to recruit um, developers or potentially a restaurant for the Packing House. Uh, just for the rocker, we have uh, Plant Commission, it currently has two cannabis dispensaries, one at four-one-seven East Route one seventy-three, and one at four-five-three Main Street. Both of those have been scheduled, rescheduled for a special meeting with Plant Commission. I anticipate that those will be coming before the village board for consideration on sometime in July. So with that, I'll conclude my update.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Garian? Alright, thank you. Um, next, uh, police chief Gutcher.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of things, uh, let you know what we've been up to, so. During the month of May, our command staff attended a training put on by the FBI regarding to our response to bomb threats, spotting hoaxes. Which actually played in rather handy, um, oddly enough, about three days after we completed that training, we had a spotting incident next week in the village. Uh, we were able to kind of determine it was spotting rather quickly in the past, guidelines have resolved it. ShaiCom has completed the installation of our outside call box outside the west entrance of the PD, so we continue to seek to improve upon our building's security measures. Uh, we determined that it was in the best interest of, of our infrastructure building to close the west lobby during the evening, not allow people inside when they're not supervised. Uh, that requires relocating the call box that's inside the west lobby outside, if somebody comes to the PD after hours of service. So, service request made at the PD will not be interrupted. Uh, we attended the Chamber of Commerce Public, Public Safety Luncheon. Fire chief talked about issues impacting the village township in a public safety perspective. Uh, we remain engaged heavily with the Lake County Initiative. Trying to, trying to, what we can to reduce the incidence of overdose-related deaths in within our community. Proud to say that as we ended last year, and we found that the six triple zero twos that were very high on the list of opioid-related overdoses, overdose deaths, uh, ranking third within the county, and as of the latest report, which is the April numbers, Antioch has fallen off the list of that numbers, so I think a lot of the uh, real proactive measures that we've taken here in our community with the opioid awareness, the Narcan distribution, the block-by-block program we've had, intervention is going to offer some assistance and resources to those that are impacted by this uh, this crisis that really seem to have made a difference in our towns, and we're very proud of that. Our cop and rooftop event was successful, uh, we were able to raise the very generous donations of our community, eight thousand dollars. That will all go a hundred percent to Illinois Special, the mixed, very deserving athletes. Commander Garcia and one of our CSOs attended the Lake County Police Expo at thirty bills. As part of our, in the drive to try to bring awareness, interest to law enforcement, for, for youth and young people throughout Lake County. As Administrator Kind had mentioned, that uh, the nine-one-one consolidation effort that's taking place in the county, and he's been graciously been accepted to the uh, finance committee. But we're trying to attack this from a number of different angles, so Commander Garcia has been appointed to the Intergovernmental Agreement Committee to make sure that we have a say on how the governance is gonna occur within that, that organization. And as of this week, I placed Deputy Chief Johnson in the police operations today to try to control some of those concerns that trustee basic brought up, where how, how transfers and Paul taking is gonna take place within the, within the dispatch center itself. Couple of personnel things, uh, Officer Hurst, you may be aware, today was his last day with us. He took a couple of, a couple of weeks of vacation prior to entering into his official retirement. Uh, he hasn't been with us very long, two years. Uh, before that, he was with Wheeling for twenty years, and then with Burne PD for four years before joining us. Uh, he had an operating refused, he's joining the Illinois Department of Police as a labor representative, so will have the fortunate opportunity to continue work with him, he's gonna be representative for our local union, so be nice to have somebody that's got a little perspective on how we work here in Antioch. Couple of anniversaries for the month of June coming up for our staff. Our records clerk Sharon Beetzel's been with the department for twelve years, Sergeant Brusalli's been with the support team. CSO Tai Bo to please hit for one year anniversary, both commanders Garcia and Smith. They hit the uh, the big benchmark of twenty years. Deputy Chief Norm Johnson and Officer Lynch have been with the department up twenty-two years, and I'm uh, wrapping up my twenty-fourth. Uh, we have re-implemented our workload analysis, so just to refresh those that are not new to the board and give uh, give those that are new to the board a little perspective. So last year, we endeavored on a pretty big project to try to determine how much of our staff time in the field is, is dedicated to obligated and unobligated time. And it kind of gives us some perspective for how much time they're able to dedicate to real proactive measures. Spending some extra time in our neighborhoods, teaching residents businesses, and a proactive measure. There's a lot of studies out there that, that kind of guide us towards looking for a sixty-five, thirty-five percent balance is kind of ideal uh, within the industry. And as we had wrapped up the study last time, we were floating right around eighteen to twenty percent, so the officers were busy. Uh, most of that was being generated due to our, our staffing challenges that were basically most of the departments. As we've been able to onboard staff with revisions in that way, we collect that data to make sure that uh, we're, we're more efficiently collecting that, having a more true reflection of what's taking place in our community. We've increased that ratio to twenty-seven percent, so we've, that doesn't sound significant, but when you think about an officer's day, an extra seven percent, seventy-eight percent of their time, able to correctly engage people in occasion, prime prevention ban. Is, ratios really does make a big difference. And then we uh, we closed our application period uh, for new recruitment this week. Uh, we had thirty-five total applicants, just for some perspective, to see what's taking place within law enforcement recruitment. Uh, our, our numbers are in trends, are varying everybody else within Lake County. In two thousand twenty-two, we had forty. And in two thousand twenty-one, we had seventy-seven, so we've seen a fifty-four percent decrease in the number of applicants and young, and young people that are interested in entering the field of law enforcement, so. We continue to work hard to, to make our department and community attractive to, to those individuals receiving it. Of course, there's, there's just less, less of them, and nearly every department in the county, state for that matter, is hiring. So it's, it's a very limited act for, for more jobs, positions that are available. And as I close, lastly, just want to let you know, the engineering and permitting application has been submitted to IDOT for our automated license plate readers. Relative to that this year, where there's some, some legislation that's working its way through that's gonna kind of control and dictate how we share, so that innovation out of state doesn't look like at first glance that it's gonna have any real impacts to how we handle that stuff internally. And it's not gonna really place any limitations or barriers to, to our useful, that innovation, but there are some interesting trends taking place with that, with the legislative. Same as the question, so I'll, I'll close.
Oh, I got, three, alright, I'm pretty honest, amazing.
I got, block cameras, one second. So historically, uh, they, they were taking a very long time to work their way through IDOT. Uh, Flock and the state had a little bit of a tip with one another uh, over, over how Flock was conducting some of their application processes. That has since been resolved. Engineer that was, the, doing his permits for the state retired at the beginning of the year. Some new engineer that's a little bit easier for these companies to work with. No promises, but they're, they're estimating probably six to eight weeks to get a review, and of course, if they have any counties that need to be corrected. So as of now, we're comfortable and believing that we're on track for our, for our estimated late July to, to get at least deployment.
Second. It's good to have names to yours, that's the best thing you did.
Thank you. I often, often get asked how many people are there recognizing the dedication of their staffs.
Anybody else? I just again want to say, uh, thank you, I was very, very happy to see the multiple uh, officers that were at the concerts, including the drones and everything else that was. Thank you, yep. Um, no IT reports tonight, so um, nothing, I heard nothing new in that department. Any trustee reports? Alright, um, then I entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make them. Motion trustee basic, second trustee Pierce, roll call.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion uh, approved, and we are adjourned at six fifty-nine. Alright, call the meeting to order at seven oh-five, this is the uh, regular, I'm sorry, this is the committee, the whole meeting, uh, roll call please.
Here.
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 Present.
There.
Presence. Um, mayoral report, couple of things I forgot to get, tomorrow's the farmer's market, don't forget to go support them. Um, also, um, as big with concerts last week, we have uh, trustee McNeil's husband, Jay Heckles' band playing around night, so the complex, so make sure you support uh, the band. And then um, another thing I want to announce that I just received notice on this week is um, before the next meeting, Congressman Schneider is holding a town hall meeting at the Senior Center on June twenty-fourth at eleven AM. Um, for those of you that know, he's our congressman, and we also have a uh, a grant requested to the congressman for ten million dollars for a public works facility, so I hope the community comes out and supports that event, so. Uh, Saturday, the twenty-fourth at eleven. Um, we had uh, approval, next is approval of the May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three committee, the whole meeting, and it's as presented, do I have a motion in the second? Don't move, motion trustee Bluth there, second trustee Berman, um, roll call please.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Uh, next item is, we're to the regular business, first is. Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is we're to the regular business. First is the marketplace TIF proposal. We have Mr. Gary will present and we have Fran before rude via Zoom, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Again, this matter comes before you at the scene on a proposal for a concept for a marketplace TIF. As you know, as we continue to attract developers along the route with seventy-three quarter, our major commercial parcel is what was previously known as an eighty-two acre marketplace property. So anticipating future interest in that, we have asked S.B. Freeman to provide a proposal. So S.B. Freeman, obviously, what the most prominent economic development in TIF analysis analysis firms in Midwest has submitted a proposal, which is a year package. You have that year packet. Has staff has been working with S.B. Freeman. As you recall, S.B. Freeman completed our previous Boylan TIF a number of years ago. They're obviously an expert at creating TIFs. So staff has identified not only the eighty-two acre marketplace property, but also the opt-in property, which is twelve acres to the south, as potentially a key to attracting new commercial development, mixed-use development to the village. In this study, you'll see there's approximately one hundred forty-five, nineteen parcels, which involves approximately one hundred and forty-five acres. Within the proposed proposal, obviously, before we can create a TIF, we need a TIF study. As you'll see, the TIF study, our proposal actually incorporates enough extensive involvement incorporating the eligibility and cannot because the study, that's where S.B. Freeman actually comes out. And actually looks at the site itself and there's a full reconnaissance. They also do a creation of the development plan, which is really the major portion of any type of TIF plan, which is the redevelopment plan. Also, the preparation of maintenance, as you know, any creation of a TIF requires public, a public hearing. So S.B. Freeman will prepare a full maintenance and do a lot of prep work for a legal counsel prior to creating the TIF. And also, more importantly, help us get ready for a public hearing. As you know, we have a public meeting with other governing bodies, taxing bodies prior to the creation of the TIF. So S.B. Freeman will work with staff on that appropriate hearing with the school district and some of the other taxing bodies. As you well know, we've done tests before. We have the Boylan TIF. It's one of our major economic development tools, attracting new commercial development in the village. As you know, we have a business district. But staff believes that the creation of a TIF on the eighty-two acre marketplace property, a Boylan property, will provide us additional economic tool to attract new commercial users to the corridor. So if there's any specific questions about the TIF or nature of TIF, I think Fran can provide you the answers to that, but we look forward. Depending on subjects that goes forward, a consideration approval of working with S.B. Freeman on this important project. So with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Actual proposal, as my staff report is a total of thirty-six thousand dollars. And with that, I will be more than happy to answer any questions and or turn it over to, on this the road to answering specific questions that the village board may have as it relates to this proposal.
Thank you. Ms. Root, if you want to add anything, otherwise I'll have the trustees just ask questions as presented. Is there anything you want to add?
No, I am happy to answer any questions. As Mike Michael noted, we've worked with the village on both your TIF district and existing business districts and look forward to the opportunity to helping you all out again and achieving your goals.
Thank you. All right, I'll start on this side. Dais, any questions or comments down here?
I don't have any questions, but I do, I just want to say that it obviously this is necessary to to get started on and being that we've already worked with this company in the past, I think that it's a good way to move forward and, you know, like Mr. Gary can stated, it's an additional economic driver.
Thank you. Trustee, my only thought is that it's just I don't know why we took so long to get here because this this property is is going to be a major economic boom for Antioch if we can get that developed. So anything we can do as a board to get that going, if it's a TIF, whatever we need to do. So I think we should move forward on this as soon as possible. And there is one group. So so everybody goes, there is one group that has already started with like site plan where it, you know, in the process. So there is definitely development interest. It's not just a theory on that. Just to deal.
Yeah, my only question was that I think this is wonderful and exciting. I was just curious because I knew at all of this, I've been trying to educate myself. Do we have any information yet on the surveyors or the engineering? I thought that those things were not included in the proposal for how that works or how that comes into play? What are our next steps?
Well, the nice thing about it, once we create a TIF, we can work with the development community, specific developers and actually engineering, land acquisition, infrastructure improvements, those are all basically costs which can be reimbursed through the TIF. So that's one of the major advantages of TIF. It really helps the developers and development community. You know, upfront, a lot of that very, very expensive infrastructure improvement, engineering costs, all that. So we've used it before. As you go to Antioch Corporate Park, it's a TIF and we were able to basically attract handy foils for the Fisher papers and other users using a TIF and a lot of those initial engineering and upfront costs were again reimbursed to developers. And at the end of the day, what attracted the developers and made us different than other swan communities.
Yeah, and I would just add that in terms of our proposal, there is a note that for certain elements of eligibility, we would need to work with an engineer. In the past, I think H.R. Green has worked with the village. So we're happy to work with whoever your engineering consultants are, or we can also recommend certain consultants that perform the types of services that that might be needed if we end up needing those components of the analysis.
Thank you. Trustee Pierce.
I think it's an interesting proposition. I think the study is necessary. I do have concerns over the impact on schools and I'd like to make sure that we cover every base we can in this study. Because if I'm incorrect, maybe somebody will correct me. I don't think we're making Boylan TIF yet.
We are. It did fall negative for a while. The tractor supply has been steadily producing that increment. So that was included when we created that TIF. So when they went vertical and created that building, it created a pretty, I don't remember the number, but your treasurer's report each month has a number in that TIF and it is positive now. Say, I can't remember. It's like a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand.
There's approximately a hundred thousand dollars accumulated in that particular TIF. And if I'm not mistaken, there is a mechanism to extend that TIF at some point if we choose to do that, correct? I'll leave that maybe for the attorney. I know we're reaching out to more, just but yeah.
Now, you can. I'm understanding why you could extend it to thirty-five years and recent legislative amendments allow for the extension up to forty-seven years. It does come with certain qualifications and stuffs. I've done more than I care to share of TIF extensions. So yes, possibly.
And I just want to make sure if we're doing a TIF, we're being productive with it. I remember the original TIF that was on downtown Antioch forever, never really seemed to produce anything. It was always, oh, we got a TIF here, but it was. That was it. I can't speak to that one, but you know, it's important that we have that tool to create some funding that could offset the attractiveness to the developers is these funds can go to eligible costs like stoplights or grading or other things that make it attractive for the developers because it's not their cost anymore. So that's the good thing about it. I would anticipate anything in Boylan, though. Probably, well, we'll have to decide, but Grimrod would be a good candidate for receiving funds, you know, from the TIF. That would all come. Okay, and then the only other question I have, you mentioned the the west commercial development tax area. Can't remember the name of it. Or we're collecting money on West End. Business district, business district. Does this have any impact on that or is that they kind of lay over the top of each other? They're overlaid. They don't really impact each other. Two separate sources of revenue. TIF being property tax and business district being sales tax. So we can develop there input tax. Yes, okay. That's all I have. Trustee Mason. I'm the best part of this chair now. I don't have to ask any questions. Why do you need me there? Fun. I got ten. Ten pointing question. All right, trustee Peterson.
So regardless of the schools for the TIF, if there aren't any homes built up there, more residential, say, senior homes, we wouldn't be impacting the schools.
That's correct. I think the schools probably mean objection to a TIF. If it had a residential component would be that, because the school will get the same amount of tax money they've always been getting. It's frozen at that level. But if if we TIF something residential, we're not allowing, adding children to the school without allowing the schools to collect additional real estate taxes, that that's when it schools may object. But right now, there is no proposals, you know, that we're looking at at this point for the entire property. It's possible a mixed use development comes in at some point. I don't know what the developers going to do. And our target isn't the commercial. We have had some couple of groups in interest for like fifty-five and older communities, which obviously will affect that.
That's right. Yes.
Trustee, to your point, under the eligible redevelopment project, for the definitions of the TIF Act, it allows and actually controls for there being an offset to schools. If there is a proven impact upon the school population due to a development that's incentivized by the test. So it's controlled for in the act. And there are other ways to handle it. And when you take into consideration the infrastructure that's going in, I think it's covered. And obviously, the facts don't support that relative to what's in that probably. But it's covered for in the act.
Any other questions regarding this? Or I guess we'll, you know, they'll move into the regular next board meeting. All right. Thank you, Ms. Root, for joining us and we will see you in two weeks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the regular business discussion regarding Oliver North facade grant request. Mr. Gary again.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Again, this matter comes to be for a facade grant with Oliver North, properly commonly known as two eighty-four Lake Street. The applicant has applied for a facade grant. And as you well know, a facade grant, a very brief summary, applies a fifty percent reimbursement. As you know, the owner of the building has to basically expend the money. It's a reimbursement program. So once the project is completed, we would reimburse fifty percent once they submit all of the paid receipts and necessary waivers and leads. Our actual, you recall, this program has been in effect since two thousand sixteen. We renovated a number of numerous buildings, historic buildings along Main Street under this program. There are a set of facade design guidelines that were adopted by the village board, I believe, via resolution back in two thousand sixteen. And for the record, that guidelines called that the maximum amount of any facade grant is a hundred thousand. We do have one precedent, you'll call Station Fifty-One, we did buy them a hundred thousand dollar facade grant for their renovation of their restaurants. Advocate this evening comes before you this evening for a request for what we believe is a very exciting project. As you well know, Oliver North is one of our finer restaurants and absolutely a very important commercial anchor for a vibrant downtown. So we're excited about and look, continue to work with this owner of this building, a new owner, currently the owner purchased this building, I think, last year, my reference is correct. Continuing the vibrancy of this restaurant. So the applicant has a very exciting, interesting proposal and I'm going to allow Mr. Burn is a detective for that. They actually kind of walk you through the actual elevation changes. Very interesting. They're extensive. This is a really a major, major renovation. The exterior, as I provide you in my staff report, there's it's over well over a three hundred thousand dollar investment in the facade alone. And based on that fact, I provide you a summary. The overall request is advocates identify a total cost of it's going to be three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. And I'm going to allow the protect to actually kind of provide a breakdown of that that extensive cost. And this is would be a new precedent. The advocate is requesting reimbursement as I've identified in my staff report. They've identified a major reimbursement, well exceed the hundred thousand dollars. So the applicants have identified in my staff report, the applicant is seeking approximately a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in reimbursement as a part of this facade grant. We did have an opportunity to sit down with the applicant and staff did express some of our concerns because as you well know, we have a hundred fifty thousand dollars in our side program this year. So staff did have, you know, some concerns about in order to amount of impact that we have on our fiscal budget this year. As we are continuing to work with some other building owners this year for potential facade grants. So based on the discussion, initially staff did propose whether there be any support or maybe breaking that down into two fifty thousand dollar payments over two years. Again, the applicant has made it quite clear that this is an important project, a very expensive project. And they're still seeking, again, reimbursement of hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. But they are, I think, somewhat flexible on basically extending every repayment of that monies over two, three years and I'll allow the applicant maybe to outline their request. So I'm going to maybe just turn over to Mr. Corners here to kind of walk you through the architectural proposal itself and kind of give you a sense of what the applicant is proposing for this feature facade grants. With that, I'm going to conclude my staff report. Turn it over to David.
Yes, we have.
Do you include hearing? Are there slides?
Yeah. Yeah, just open, go to the step one, what the map is. Get that slide down. That's like. Okay, and then spread some color on the issue. So I have color on this. This is the
David, so obviously, I might not have eyes in the back of your head, but either you can turn the podium, just so the people on Zoom are watching, they can't hear anything unless you're right. Thank you.
I guess the best thing to do is walk you through the concept here. The concept of basically to open the building up to the outside. But to also make it can take different stages and open up.
You can walk it. So so just for the record, if you're listening, introduce who you are.
Andy House, our partner, for the owners of Oliver building. We want to create a really cool, unique structure that no other city or township has without impeding on the existing restaurant of what it really is. It's to extend the part of the building and David will walk you through the design out towards the road to our property line. Put in two glass walls that are retractable. So in one of the slides will show you, it can be a private dining room that will hold up to thirty-two people. You could open up one of the glass walls on the weekend, on a Saturday night. You had another twenty-five existing seats, what we currently have. You could close the interior wall, open up the exterior wall. You're sitting outside under like in the building with an open front or on those perfect summer nights, we could open up both walls and you've got a true European style cafe facing the front. We get a lot of complaints about our tents. It's big, it's gaudy, it's boxed and thick. We would be able to get rid of that. And but yet still have our outdoor seating on that area. And so there's a lot of ironwork, there's a lot of stock, there's a lot of just expenses going to go into this. And I heard the president. um, just expenses going to go into this, and I heard the precedent was a hundred thousand, but that I think we all agree that the cost of construction from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty three is not even in the ballpark. I mean, we're up two hundred, three hundred percent more now than what we were uh pre-COVID, let alone twenty sixteen. And so I know that number is shocking, um, but uh like like Michael said, we'd be very open to figuring out how we all work together and and do well, but I think this is something that will impact the village very positively. Um, but I don't know if we can absorb it all on our own, um, long term, because then there's that rate of return, and how long does it take to get your money back out of it? But I think this would make not only Oliver North, but Antioch have something that no place else has. I mean, now you've got Station Fifty One, you've got Rivals, you've got Oliver North, you're creating a destination for for people to come. When people go to Libertyville to have dinner, they'll start to say, let's go to Antioch, have dinner, and your your shops will, and it's because you're you're putting money into these the places that attract, so that's what I got, I'll turn it over to David, and then I'll walk you through the the design and concept.
Increase revenue.
Oh, we would increase our revenue about twenty percent, uh, we do about one point three million a year in revenue now. Uh, we think, uh, doing this renovation in twenty twenty four alone, we'd go up about twenty percent with sales tax numbers for the village, um, I don't, I have run the analysis of how long it would take you to improve a hundred fifty two thousand, but you take one point three times twenty percent times your sales tax number, and you can figure out how long it would take the village to reboot their outlet, it's not, it's not forever. Probably a lot quicker than the tips, so this is discussing that.
So I think the best way to do this is, um, like, we had the packet, and I know this is like the picture that's up there right now. Um, there was an internal drawing, so, um, why don't we see what questions the trustees have? And then we can relate back to the drawings where they're necessary or the schedule. Um, I had one question, so say, um, this gets, goes to the next board meeting, gets approved. Um, what's the timeframe of uh this project, when would it start?
We would expect start this fall, in September, it'd be done by end of November.
We don't want to miss, yeah, we don't want to miss the holiday season.
Okay.
So we'd like to do it, start, give or take September fifteen, reopen by Thanksgiving.
So you'd be shut down for a month or two?
We wouldn't shut the restaurant down, you'd have like a, you know, a wall, a traditional wall, over human construction on the outside. We'd have to work through some ways of logistics, getting people in and out safely, that kind of stuff, but it would disrupt our area for sixty days. It's at the end of the summer, it's uh traditionally October, November are really slow for the restaurant season in the area. But, um, December, we don't want to miss it, because December is when every business, everybody comes out, and it would be a rebrand opening.
In Salsteing.
In Salsteing.
Questions on this side of the dice, any questions about this? Trustee Luther.
I'm a little confused when I look at the, what we have in front of us, there's different numbers all over the place. There's an application that you guys submitted that shows a reimbursement requested of ninety six thousand. There's uh one hundred and fifty thousand, I'm being told, um, your total on this one is three hundred fifty one thousand. So I guess my question is, is what exactly are you asking the village for? Because your application amount is is under the hundred thousand, it shows ninety six thousand. Um, that's number, I'll ask my questions, and if you can answer, then.
Mike, wasn't that the, uh, my initial, before I got an actual price from, uh, the nano wall? The manufacturer of this actual wall, and it just put the budget on water. This is a very, very nice product. Sounds exactly what we need, but it's uh, that's a hundred ninety, hundred ninety four thousand dollars, hundred, hundred thirty nine.
Right, apologies for the confusion, um, trustee, but exactly, there there was the initial, you're correct, initial, uh, request was a rubber, under a hundred thousand dollars, the nano wall specifically, which came in midway, actually after I think their initial staff report that was forwarded to you initially, uh, that really increased the budget substantially, so well over three hundred thousand dollars. So, um, obviously, the applicant is looking for half of three hundred, approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars, right?
On the same subject, I I'm looking for alternative.
Looking for one seventy five.
I'm I'm trying to get it down, get that that nano wall, try to find some other competing product that that would accomplish same thing, you know, maybe in the order from China.
I mean, obviously, we would need some clarification with the the numbers being. Michael, i- in regards to the facade program, does that dollar amount they're requesting include any of the internal work as well?
No, no, and why, and just again, we're trustee basics, point about mathematics. There are certain costs which were not eligible, and total cost here was staff deducted, so that that's why if you do the math, it's it doesn't come out to half.
Does all costs, does the price as you have in here, obviously, will be cleaned up, include both walls or just the external? So basically, if we approved it as is, that would include internal work?
Well, both walls, they're gonna be external, see, if you see, you'll be actually drawing.
Well, you'll have both of you, you'll have internal back wall.
Right, but they're they're gonna be both external, could be both external walls, that's why the applicant's requested. But you're correct, it could be interior, it's flexible, could be interior wall too.
Okay. Um, I mean, I love the new look and the and the color drawings and the color artwork. Um, I think that would be incredible, um, I have an issue with the amount being requested, I want to get that clarified. Um, but I see us, I mean, I would like to see us move forward on 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 helping you get to this. Um, I just have some questions about the dollar amount and what exactly we're reimbursing as part of the software. So we get clarification on that, and I'd like to see us move forward.
By the way, this is a budget that I put together another time, you know, hopefully, put this out to bid, we could get more efficient.
I don't have any questions for the architect, I love Oliver, everything looks great, but just from Michael, uh, what would be, if we did approve of this with these rough numbers? What's left over, should somebody else approach the village?
If we were able to extend, again, subject to, this is new territory, but they were except, able to extend um, the payments over two or three years, then it would be my hope that we could still have a box, approximately a hundred thousand dollars in our facade budget for this fiscal year.
So somebody else approached?
Correct.
So some of the stuff we talked about, and again, it's up for discussion at board level, is would you maybe, uh, approve using number a hundred fifty thousand to seventy five thousand this year, which leaves you with the other half? And then maybe you thirty seven thousand five hundred in May, because that's when your new year starts, and then you another thirty seven thousand five hundred following May. You know what I mean, so then it doesn't eat up, we're not trying to take everything. But I just think it's gonna be such a generator for the village that, you know, it'd be silly to not, you know, both work together. Figure out how to do it as the prime location of the village, so.
Uh, trustee Pierce, um, I'll be honest here, um, I feel like we're dancing around with semantics. Not an interior wall, an interior wall, not a payment, yes, a payment, this is a payment, that a payment. I appreciate what you guys are doing, I really like Oliver's, their food's delicious, I like your look. I have no interest in paying for your interior work, whether it's an exterior wall that gets moved out, uh, even the tents, that means the sidewalk is getting returned to what it used to be, I I, there's a lot of questions I got going on here, and I don't think just saying, well, we're gonna pay next year, but we'll pay some this year, I that's semantics. And it's playing a game with the village's money, so that you guys can improve your building, interior and exterior at our expense. You're gonna be making one point five million dollars uh a year improvement on your on your bottom line. That's revenue.
Revenue.
Okay.
I went to the bottom.
What if you're 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 expecting twenty percent increase from one point three million to about one point five, six million? Okay, so you're getting a healthy increase yourself here, and you're expecting the taxpayers to, um, take this ordinance, turn it on its head, and and uh divide things up over a year, so that the other, we're not taking all the money from all the other businesses. But eventually, we are taking money from the other businesses, so that you guys can can increase your interior footprint and and move it around as next year. I I I'm willing to work with you towards a hundred thousand dollars, I'm not willing to go higher than that, I'm not willing to spend it out over years.
Sure, we're okay, I mean, I appreciate that.
I'm just saying, I I feel like I'm being played here, honestly.
Well, I apologize.
I don't blame you, I mean, you have to go out and negotiate, you're going out to ask for the moon, I mean, I don't blame you. Um, trustee Mason.
I'd love the look. And the only concern is, I don't know who else is in mind, I don't want to take away from those postfalls and this thing. And I just looked at other communities, they pay a lot, and don't, other people, the businesses here. And and you making more money, that's, that's great, that's, that's, I mean, no one should be jealous of that. Because the money all comes back to to the village, to the community, pay the police, everybody's got, good for you guys, good for you. No one should be jealous of the business, you hear our good. So, if if we, if you guys could come do a figure, whatever that figure is, maybe come back and say, this is, this is me, the nail that now. And then we know who's in line, for the, I think fair to everybody, because we don't want to think maybe, maybe there's gonna be a potential beautiful place that's gonna come in, I don't know what the golden business would be. If it was, I should do it, but Sal's a great guy, first of all, you guys, you guys got the gold, take the great. So if there's a way to do it, you should, you should back it, because, because the only thing that you guys should throw in there is, you gotta fig- figure out the stupid crash things, we gotta, we gotta figure out how to light those things up, someone's gonna get hurt, they're black, they're ugly, and the village should pay for that. Because that's a, that's a road, we should figure that out, because I I'm just picturing someone eating there and and some stupid truck that was following them, and they're gonna get, they're gonna get debris in their plastic bowl, and in their eyes, and whatever.
We'd love to figure out how to get rid of the green railing too, but I don't think that's gonna happen. But we would trade you the green railing, and you could take away the front of the, uh, put the road back if you wanted to, but that's negotiation. So.
Thank, thank you, uh, trustee Peterson.
Well, first of all, um, I love Oliver North, I eat there often, uh, and I really like the nano walls very much, I have problems, I have problems. I have problems going over a hundred thousand dollars. But, um, to trustee Mason's point, I really like a lot of white lumber, and I'd like to know exactly what you're gonna do, so, you know, go off your bids, or whatever you're trying to do with it, but we've told other people, I'm sure, Michael, um, what did we give to, say, the Schwinn place?
We gave the Schwinn, the total cost of sixty four thousand.
Okay.
That was a major project, with structural issues.
Okay.
We gave, obviously, Station Fifty One, fifty one thousand, I refresh my memory.
And I, and I know that Station Fifty One, the owner of that put over a million dollars in the rolling, right, so I have a hard time going over a hundred thousand dollars here.
There's more plans to come, but it's for them outside first.
Okay, okay, same.
So unless there's other comments tonight, it sounds like you guys are refining the plan, thought contractors, come back with a hard number. Uh, I will caution that, um, due to inflation, other items, uh, we have had people come in asking for an amount and then coming back and say, oh, well, it actually caused this much, so, you know, it's one bite of the apple, so, um, you know, we appreciate it, I, uh, we could put you on another call, you think, once the next number's come in, is that the next time? Yeah, yeah, so, once you have the, you know, the bids and, we'll be ready to come come back, at least you heard what the board thinks, so thank you for coming in.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
Hope we get this one.
Um, next item on the agenda, the discussion regarding the memorandum of understanding with the Antioch Public Library for security cameras. Who is presenting? Chief, got you? Thank you.
So this is really just a culmination of our effort to expand our, our access to partnership with organizations in our community to help keep our, our community a little bit safer, uh, through discussions with the library director, Jennifer. They recently made a lot of upgrades to their internal and external security work in their cameras. Uh, she approached me and asked me about my thoughts on granting access to the PD in certain situations, to either assist with public safety needs or internal investigations. Uh, their attorney worked with with our attorney to come up with a draft that works for both sides, that achieves the objectives of both while protecting the privacy of library being patrons in, uh, in compliance with the library policies. This will allow us to have access to their cameras almost as needed, um, for official purposes. Then, under certain circumstances, there's a protocol in place for me to notify the library director who will in turn notify the library board of the nature and duration of the access.
Thank you, um, questions regarding this, was there anything on this side over here, trustee Berman?
In the FOU, it states that, uh, the village will pay the cost of the system and equipment. I, but I didn't see price, but I wasn't sure if that had to, if that was kind of grouped into something else that I just wanted.
Yeah, this is a, this is a traditional IP-based system, so there will be no costs associated with our access to it. Uh, that would, you know, I'd be wanting to have specialized equipment on premises to build a report, that sort of thing, that granted for any anticipated costs. This is outside, is it? Oh, yes.
Trustee Luther?
No question.
Mr. Neil, trustee Pierce.
So if it's outside or inside, is there anything that that you could work with them, where we could have cameras mounted on their property? Where we can see into our property, we're not monitoring them, but we're looking into our property. Like the baseball circles.
The director is very, very, uh, proactive with these type of things, and she's very agreeable to to make sure that we're able to keep our community safe, um, I think that would be certainly worthy of a conversation, something the board would wish to explore. And where we can protect that area, we've been on a vision order sometimes.
Thank you, trustee Mason.
What's that, sorry, pointed where he thinks about that?
Yes. Trustee Pearson, okay, um, all right, we will move this to the uh next board meeting, for the regular meeting. All right, we have, um, next item number four, we have two liquor license items, the first is, uh, making making note, Del Bino request for lower license fee, we have Deb Trumbino in person here. Um, and, uh, the memorandum is in our packet, um, requesting a reduction in the liquor license fee. Currently is two thousand dollars a year requested. All right, so, um.
Yeah, because, I mean, some things are new, some are not, so we zoned our property, I don't know how familiar you are with Big Neno Del Bino, but my name's Deb Trumbino, it's a family business, uh, we're gonna celebrate ten years, actually, this November, being actually in the Village of Antioch, we went through a zoning process to annex our property in about twelve years ago. And we opened up our building in two thousand thirteen in November, so, um, you know, again, excited to be a part of Antioch. That's why we did it, authentic, I made sure we have not just the winery, but twenty three hundred vines on our property. So we're the only one in this area of Lake County that has a winery with a vineyard attached, the only other one is in Lockrow. So, um, I would like to keep it going, but it's pretty steep in regards to the liquor license, and I'll explain a little bit why I think it's steep. Um, we're only currently open on the weekends, okay, so, um, that's my decision, I have. So, um, that's my decision. I have, um, this is my, uh, business, but it's a side business, so. I got a degree in viticulture and anology and, uh, maybe come bigger, but right now I have another full-time job. So, Saturday and Sunday, we're open for tasting. Okay, twelve to seven on Saturdays, twelve to five on Sundays, that's it, okay? We do have special events once a month, maybe twice a month, that will hit a Friday night. Okay, but other than that, we're not open. Okay, I know on our original thing, it said ten AM to eight thirty PM or something like that. Uh, we've never been open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, when we first started in two thousand thirteen, we're open on Thursdays. Um, the other thing is that, um, we are only allowed to distribute wine. Um, I do make the wine, I make all the wine local. Um, it's made typically from local grapes. Um, but we pay the same amount as a full-service restaurant that can serve hard liquor. Beer, and they're open a lot longer than I am, or more hours. So, um, I don't want to become a nightclub. Uh, when I first zoned my property, that's what one of my neighbors thought I would have. Um, I want to enhance, you know, the villages, again, authentic by nature. Uh, but it's really hard to swallow a two thousand dollar a year liquor license when you're only open a certain amount of time. Um, I, it's hard for us to recoup. Um, well, even in COVID, when we could actually do the, you know, pick out the bottles and stuff like that, that's one thing. But, again, I think the distinguisher is the hours. And that, you know, we pay the same as somebody who actually can distribute and sell any type of liquor. So, and I'm not looking to do that by the way. I don't want to be a nightclub.
Thank you. Um, discussion from the board, uh, questions or comments on the side? We're here.
I was gonna bring that same comment up about, you know, as far as the pricing.
What am I looking for?
No, 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 it's the comment that, the last half that you made, um, about the price being same as. Full service liquor, um. I feel that that, that isn't fair, um.
Oh, keep in mind that I've been doing this for ten years and have never, I mean. This was all new to Antioch. Antioch's never had a winery, they didn't know how to zone it, they didn't know how to price it, I get it. But at this point, I felt the need that I needed to come back. So, I could have come back years ago, I just didn't want to do that. I'd like to keep my winery open, I truly would. Uh, but I, again, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's fair per se, I do have a figure that I'm thinking, but, um, I, I appreciate that.
And do you? Would you mind telling us what?
Well, let's put it this way, I, I don't know, you know, like, as far as manufacturing and. Most of the liquor licenses that you guys have around here are just for distribution. I pay the federal government to manufacture, I pay the state to manufacture and to do retail. Um, and and Antioch's price is more than double of both of the state licenses that I pay. So, just to let you know. So, that's the difference, you know, so that's sort of what I'm looking at too.
Thank you. Um, trustee Luther? I'm gonna ask you very directly, what number? Are you requesting?
You know, I would write around, I'm not asking for the world, you know, anywhere between a thousand and thirteen.
A question, I don't know who I would direct these to. A class I winery license allows them to do what?
It's up to them, you know, it just, it is based on, I mean, it sell, they'll go take, do tastings. At a certain period of time, I sell it off.
Okay. I mean, when I look at these prices that are on this, this report, we have, it, it seems like we might have some flexibility here. Uh, I'd be open to having a discussion about it. And see where we can come up with, because when I look at, you know, another recipe, you're basically paying the same as a restaurant for the service license.
Crazy, sorry.
So, I, I think we could, you know, and, and I don't see a big onset of wineries coming, they have got it soon, so. I think I, I'm, I'm open to discussion on this to see if we can do something. Um, let me just, because of.
And, and one day down the road, I'd love to have a tasting room in the downtown area, which would be kind of cool.
So, just the class, um, class I winery license, the license authorized the sale of bottled table wines for consumption. On or off the premises, the licensee may sell wine for consumption on the premises by the glass, smaller samples. Commonly known as flights, or by the bottle at the serving table or bar. Um, conserve, uh, wine on premises. Uh, and or offer taste or samples during the following days and times, Saturdays, Sundays and holidays, ten to eight. Holidays, ten to eight, all tasting samples, must be offered inside the building, they can ship bottles and products, not paraphrasing. Um, they can remove one unsealed from the. The patrons can remove one unsealed, partially distinct bottled wine, uh, from the premises, so that's.
And that's kind of weird, he never talks about that, and it's illegal actually. So, I don't ever do that.
So, this guy right here, he didn't write it though.
You gotta fork that, I mean, seriously. Nobody leaves our premise, then I fork bottle.
And, and for reference, and for reference, um, thanks to technology, I was able to just look up Long Grove charges a thousand dollars for the same places.
Thank you, that was so nice. But yeah.
Um.
No, my question was answered by trustee Luther, I was curious what, what that number was. It seems reasonable, I've been to your winery, had dinner there, your events are fun, and it seems like very flexibility there as well.
Thanks.
I've got another question. Trustee Mason?
Well, I've got a lot to say. I think we should actually. Uh, make a different, a special class, this is more an agricultural. In a farm girl. Hard carry. We should have agricultural license, because this is an agricultural event. Uh, she's growing, and she's having people taste, this is a bit more, bit more property in Antioch. Um. So, is a thousand dollars? Is it price? Probably not. Uh, is it equipment, farming and everything else? fertilizer? Which is probably, I don't know what it is, because it's probably natural. Um. It's a secret. But, I think, you know, you're getting, you're getting agricultural discounts on your property because you're agricultural.
And real estate.
And real estate, so you should get it on the license.
So, I guess it's real estate, I can't remember how they zoned it, but it was agricultural real estate.
Right, so farm girl, this should have been at the meeting home, but that's farm girl. So, I think, I think actually. The village should look at doing an agricultural winery license, instead of having the same license, they're just reducing the fee. That's my thing. Because I think a thousand dollars is even too much money for what you're doing. Because if you, for instance, I'm gonna, just give the board an idea, if you have a bad year. You get no crop, you get no wine, you get no money.
In two thousand nineteen, we had, uh, ninety percent loss in grapes because of too much moisture, and two thousand twenty, we had seventy-five percent.
Right, where do you recoup that out of?
I love this year, by the way, I love the growth.
So, that's my point.
Thank you.
You can have a bad year, but you still get your license fees.
I do.
Then, you can't buy crop insurance and wine.
Yeah, I mean, we're good here, but now, yeah, I had to buy.
You can't buy crop insurance on winners, that I know.
That is true.
So, that's the problem, you can't ensure that crap. Other, other farmers can insure their crops, you're kind of on your own, so that's why I think. Talking like an expert, I'm not gonna talk about it, that's why we should have a special class for you. Because you're kind of on your own, where you can't buy insurance for your losses.
Um, thank you. Um, trustee Peterson?
Thank you. I, uh, I, I tend to agree with trustee Mason here. Um, it should be lower than a thousand dollars and, um, and we should have a.
We had to ask, I'm in sales for my other job, so there you go.
It's my turn. Um, we should have a special, uh, category for these, so maybe we could.
Sure, and I, so, I'm gonna make a suggestion. Um, I suggest that we, uh, because a winery license could just be somebody opening a. Without improving their own products, it'd just be somebody opening a shop downtown and saying, we're a winery. Well, we have a wine shop license, and they're clearly, so, I would suggest something like this, uh, that, uh. We consider, um, making this license a five hundred dollar a year license. And if she prepaid for this year, which just was due, then we give a reduction starting from this year. Maybe that's an export, so, so there would be a refund. You don't ever say government didn't give you money back. Trustee Pierce?
Um, my, my only concern is, I think we have to pass, sure, we have to, thank you, or is the lawyer to have to write some documents? Um, my, my, the only concern I have is, you know, I was just out in the Apple Valley, beautiful place, and I really wish you. Tennessee, the Dappa Valleys, the wineries I've heard were very nice, uh, and they're making like, you know, a fist. If, if you were like, Arundel or some of the other places out there, I'd be like, no way. You know, so if you ever did, I think we need to have some sort of review process. Successful start shipping over the internet. Sure, making money that we should build.
Answer your question about shipping, you have to be really big to ship, because every state requires you to have a specific license to ship alcohol into their state. So, unless you are like a barer or a gallow, it's really not worth it. So, just so you know, I can ship inside Illinois, but right now I'm not doing, but if, if I do it just over the border here.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
It's not worth it, so, I was just in Malibu at a very beautiful vineyard, so I know.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we should have some sort of process for, for future, which you're one is perfect, I don't disagree with it. But if it became a big production, then we'd have to do it.
All right, so, um, we'll have the attorneys, through, um, draft something that, uh. With a proposal of five hundred bucks with whatever revisions we may need, and then bring it to the next board meeting, unless there's any objection. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It goes easy. Um, next, uh, we have a, uh, liquor license request from, um. Darni Food and, uh. Requesting an expanded sampling license, we have, uh, Senator Darni here to present, thank you.
Thank you, considering my request. Um, I have a family business gas station down the road from here, it used to be forty-two. Um, we, uh, in two thousand nineteen, uh, they require us, um, the gas tax law. Which tremendously increased the gas tax, and we are way higher than sponsored across the border. So, which, uh, due to that, we lost seventy percent of our money. All, all the year. And which is also, we can say it's that amount of tax that we provide on the bench for a billion of them. So, so we, as a small business, we are considering and looking into all other options, how we can survive in the future. Uh, as more EVs are coming, uh, so we have to go into, uh, looking at all other options in the future. So, what we're seeing is, like, we have right now a class D license, or gas station, the class doesn't have the kind of sampling. So, we want, we are putting a request, like, if the class D license. Have a expanded sampling similar to a class C license, so we can have a tasting, so we can involve the new customers. And also, we can, uh, apply for gaming based on that, so we can have more extra revenue, so we can. Bridge the gap that give lost revenue due to the gas.
Um, thank you, and I believe, um, just for the record, it's in packet. The other two other years, the three, uh, class D licenses are, uh, your gas station. Fifty-nine to one seventy-three, and then Graham, which is North Avenue. Okay, so, um, open it to the board for discussion, I'll start on this side of the dais. Discussion of this.
Yeah, I, I. Taxing on the gas, um. And there are, there are a lot of people that are going over the border, um.
I think, anytime you can go over there, you can see lines are on, right? So, all the, the volume, all the revenue has gone to the other side, so we are trying to see how we can bring back that money back to you. By adding the, the sampling or if you, uh, increase our revenues, is also additional revenue for the ministry, the tax.
Now, for, as far as earnings, I know that you guys, you made a lot of, um. Changes, positive changes, um, to the building, um. I, I, I think that. As far as the other considerations, I, I know that there's, um, from the businesses that have the gaming, there's been. I've heard some complaints about parking being an issue where people are coming to do. Play the games, and they're taking spots that other customers need, but I, over by you guys, I think you guys definitely. Have enough parking.
Yeah, we have.
To, um. You, and you definitely have the space inside of your store, um.
And then only adding, like, uh, maybe two, she's just adding maybe three more parking space, that would be, so it's not that much.
Um. I'm gonna, I'm, I don't have any questions or anything else. This point to.
Trustee Luther? Yeah, um. I have no questions, I just wanna, I've been giving this a lot of thought and did a little research and. Our attorney can tell me if I was wrong, if I'm not mistaken. Gambling laws came into place, it was mainly limited to truck stops, and then in turn. It was revised to allow for the smaller gas stations to have. Those along with, with the poor license portion of the state law was put in place so that the smaller gas stations could. Get gaming also. I know it's not that simple, but it's.
No, right. The history matches that. I thought the foreign license came in for different reasons, but it may, it, that may be. But I'm not familiar with those coming in in staggered manners like that, but that's. Um, I can look into it.
I, I, I'm a former state legislator, told me that, how it was developed back in the day, but. Um, and my, my biggest issue is, is I'm afraid that if we don't. Do things to help these gas stations in, in town. I mean, what, July first, the taxes go up again?
Yes.
On gas, and July first, the. The, uh, grocery tax goes back in with that. Um. I mean, I'll admit, I go over the border to buy gas, I mean, when you're spending saving forty to plus cents a gallon, um. Um, and what I don't want to see is a bunch of empty gas stations around their town. So, I want to do what we can to help them. Um, I do worry that, not worry, but I don't think. As, 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 we're gonna reach a saturation level with these machines where the revenue, I don't think is gonna go up. To the village as much as it would in, in the past when we've added. Additional licenses or, or gambling facility. Um.
It may be a different stream of people who doesn't want to go to bars or restaurants, like, because they're, they already have a lot of, like.
Right.
They're already playing on us, they won't maybe have a different thing.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know. Right, and, and, and what I'm being told is that the people that are gonna gamble in the. Gas station, for example, or someone that just stops in and get gas, gets there, gets something and. Once this, you know, they're not gonna be there for hours, they're gonna spend ten, twenty dollars and, and get out of there. I don't, I don't think that it's gonna be an issue of taking business away from other facilities, I don't think people are gonna. Leave their houses to go sit in a gas station and, no offense, but sit in the gas station again. Um, and I do think we need to do something to help these facilities because of the fact that if we don't. It, I don't think you're gonna be around long. And, uh, so, I would be in favor of looking into this and, and seeing what we can do, um. I'm not a guaranteed yes, but I think this is something that I think we should really give, give consideration to. Um, and, and try to help you guys as much as we can, we're talking about helping other businesses in town tonight. And, and you guys are legitimate businesses that need help also, so, if there's something we can do that, that can help you.
Asking like any kind of question. It's just like, we're in session, like, we're just trying to see if we can modify thoughts, or if we can bring in more.
So, uh, that being said, I think, uh, it's something we should definitely consider, and, uh. I'd like to, to see us move forward on this to some extent. Trustee McDaniel?
She don't have any questions for you, but I am over the consideration.
Um, I have a question, comment.
Um, I have a question, comment. Um, I know that the state passed the law that based the ability to have gaming on the um, I believe the, the acreage and the amount of diesel sold, uh, is that?
So there's two different things. One is the amount of diesel that the truck stops. So there's, if you have a pouring or sampling license, then you can also apply. You don't have to qualify for as a truck.
Okay. And then um, for instance, how was the uh for uh Grass Lake and uh fifty nine, the city go there? Are they qualified under the uh truck stop rule? Were they qualified? There's the one of the, there's Grass Lake and fifty nine. Gaming in there.
I'm sure they might, I don't, I don't think they do that much diesel, so probably they might be under the.
Under the pouring, we're through the county.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we uh, in the, they county, we have, sorry, uh, Lake Miller, we have two gas stations that is there.
And I'd also like to get our state reps involved a little bit, you know, but then obviously they have to know this, cause I have this too, so um. I would love if the state would take care of it and say that you can have it at gas stations. Not have to get these pouring licenses that are, you know, probably not really be used for that. So um, Trustee Pierce.
I guess I'm Mr. Maysayer tonight. I'm sorry. Uh, I, I really do make the gas station improvements you made and how we help make, how you make those improvements. Those significant amounts, I remember. Um, but tonight we got a letter from the Bobby Atkins um group saying what a great town we were and how clean we were and how, how, how hometowny we were and all this other good stuff. They, they couldn't say enough about us. And in the past, we've had previous boards do a lot of research, do a lot of visioning, doing a lot of planning and doing a lot of discussions of things of your nature and marriage parenting. And they, they, they decided it wasn't appropriate for Antioch at that time. Um, and you know, you read this, our, our logo that are sending by nature, you know, are.
In, in the past, there was one question was, it's like uh, the, but again, we already have a lottery and lot, which is the same thing, it's just different scheme, like it's really giving you just a different type of lot, right? So we already have it.
Correct. I've been here and I've been here the whole time you've been, you've been working for your, your pouring license. Um, you know, but we have a, we have a vision that we're working on the village of Antioch. And we're spending fourteen million plus to make this what Jim earlier called a park. I, I call it a community center uh, or central, a central project um to, to set a vision for families and plane, excuse me, and plane and, and ice cream downtown Antioch. It, I, it, it doesn't strike me that if you have a vision, but you have a vision without conviction to follow what that vision was, that you're really working to improve Antioch. We have, we're trying to make Antioch take it to another level. And unfortunately, the, the state of Illinois has stuck it to you. And you're wanting us to compromise our vision to recover from what the state of Illinois has done. And I apologize if they've done that. I, I wish, I wish they hadn't. I, I, it, it drives me crazy. Believe me, I fill up one time a day, two times a day. And my, my car holds a twenty-five gallons, so I am filling up every day. I know the price of gas and I know I'm, I was just down in central Illinois. It was, it was um four fifty-five. I go in the city, it's four ninety. And it's, you know, I come up here and I'm like, look, it's, it's below four, you know?
We are so close to borders, we, we, we have to cut at a minimum.
Correct.
Just to, and then we are still higher.
Yeah.
And we, as a, as a border town, gas station and border are more affected by the, this higher taxes. In the middle, if you go in the middle of, in the, in the, they don't care where you go, right?
I know. So I, I get it and I see the impact. I know, I know how it hurts people's wallets and they die, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I know that you're suffering, but I don't think we should change our vision in, of, of what we are or what we wanna be unfortunately to, to bring in the gambling and pouring licenses. And on top of that, I really don't think you have enough parking there. If you, and, and, and people may say they only come in there for five, ten minutes, drop twenty, go on. But my experience is that if you go to take, there's people sit there all day long. They walk over across the street, they sit there all day long. And who expected that? I mean, so you're gonna end up with.
I, I might have like, like uh, they're, they're, of course, it's true, right? It's, it's just not a s- small convenience store. So for ours in and out. So even if you have three machines, they, that being they're occupying two or three spaces, if they're all occupied, all of them.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
That shouldn't be much.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you. Um, but um, it, it may be three machines now, but in six months, you're gonna say, oh, I really want that full limit of machines because.
We don't have that much space to add like the, the pig. You, you're not that based.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just not, not a fan of this and I wanna be a supporter of this. I'm sorry.
Trustee Mason.
Oh, I gotta come. So probably three of us on the board, they're back with Ben Franklin. If I could play pin, the pinball, play uh centipede, put money in there and get my quarter back. Have the gun. Ben Franklin did not interrupt to go out and play video games back then. That's all this is, is video games. You go to a gas station, see someone playing a video game that put twenty and maybe they, they get some money back. It's, it's just you walk by, they're disturbing nobody. It's just, it's just, okay, you got a back in the corner. And I gotta be the biggest dope up here because I'm buying my gasoline from Sonny and you. And I'm, and I buy it only, only when I come to, come to the meetings here do I buy my coffee at Dunkin' Donuts. I'm either buying it from you or Sonny. That's it. Cause I give Andy a hard time and I give Eddie or, or, or Sonny a hard time. So I, I, and I told him, it's a, you know, someone's gotta, you know, to give me that every day at the one place, they gotta have better coffee. So I think, I think it's the only feasible thing because if we're gonna go with the President Joe Biden's plan, then we're gonna be electric cars. I don't wanna see a couple of people down. We're not gonna go twenty-five miles to fill up my lawn. And, and, and the only time I buy gasoline in Wisconsin is maybe on my way back from a golf course. That's it. Cause I forgot to buy it at BP on my way, way to the golf course, but I leave at five in the morning and I'm always late. So at least our start time, six thirty, the knuckleheads. So I think this is necessary. If it keeps the cost down and what they didn't do is aggressive tax. In all the border states, you go to Indiana, they all got machines. They all got machines. That's what I just don't understand. Every one of them, you go, everybody buys their cigarettes over in Indiana, but all the Illinois places, all the gas stations and so diesel and whatnot, every single one of us get machines. Because they know, every city official, they know they gotta support their gas stations. And if we're up here and we don't say we're gonna support our business owners, we say someone come for a sad program and leave our gas station. People saying, no, we're not gonna support. You charge everybody, every poor person out there, you're gonna charge everybody more money for gas. And maybe this will compensate for the prices. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. But it'll give you money to live. Give you money to live so you don't shut down that gas station to help pay, pay for maybe one, two employees to sit behind that counter. And maybe it'll keep it open past five o'clock so someone can fill up. That's the important in that machine, cause it pays for two employees, maybe. So this has become you, you can call it a necessary evil. You can call it a necessary electric cars. It's gonna be, you know, and we're gonna be, you know, I was thinking, you know, while we're sitting here, maybe the next store up here is gonna be virtual gaming. People are gonna be in the rooms of those things I'm playing. And that'll be downtown Antioch. And we'll have a big store of video games of everybody inside playing virtual gaming. You know, that's gonna be just a big video game place. That might be a money thing.
And might be something in the future.
I'm just, I was, I was thinking that maybe I should open that. Cause that'd be cool. Everybody bumping heads. So I'm for what you guys are doing and I know more, but Sonny's gonna do it, you know, for his parking space and expanding over there. So he's got the parking. I don't know, I don't know what the VPN or the DAB is gonna do. They got plenty parked there. I don't know what he's gonna do. So I don't even know why anybody buys gas. I mean, he's gotta be struggling because people are just lazy if they don't go.
Well, they're, they're, they're a big corporation, so they, they're, they're.
It's gotta be an ease, that is, the only thing I can think is gotta be taken off the taxes as a loss. So, but like I said, I gotta be the biggest dope because I guess the acid coffee between you and Sonny, so.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Trustee Peterson.
Thank you. I'm not a big fan of.
Oh my gosh.
We have a lot. We have many businesses in Antioch struggling. And it's not just because of gas prices, it's the economy. There's a lot of stores downtown that don't get the foot traffic that we thought that they were gonna get. Um, they're, they are struggling. Uh, we have some that are in trouble. And we don't have any relief for them. I mean, we can't give everyone a pouring license, so we certainly can't give everyone gaming. There is no relief for that. And I'm I understand the plight that you have with, with gas prices. It's, it's, but it's not our fault here that Springfield did what they did with the gas prices. And it's not our fault here that Lake County Board imposed a tax as well. And I know it's very, very hard times, but we can't give everyone a pouring license, so we can't give everyone gaming. And how do we say no to people? How, how do we say no to them? When they come here and we, and ask us, we, if we do this for you, and the other gas stations are gonna be here tomorrow morning asking for theirs. So I I have to say that I'm not in favor of this.
So, um, again, we can go around this again. Um, I think that this is uh, another cow, committee, the whole meeting to discuss this, to look at um, some of the questions that came up about the qualifications for other gas stations, the legislative history on it, um, numbers and maybe what some other towns around us are doing, other border towns that are sure in the same situation. Um, I did pull some numbers today uh in Richmond, just to look at it, because they have a couple there that's uh, one of them is a Graham uh, gas station, which I noticed. Um, so I think you're hearing a split board to some degree right now, some undecideds. And I think that um, I think that uh the village attorney and yourself and probably the other two owners, uh, we, we sit down and see where the, where the, you know, where we're headed, what we're on this. But I think we, um, this isn't something that we just say in the past. I know the thing has been like, see you guys later. We're not interested. I think we're hearing more um, understanding from um the board, you know, one way or the other about uh, the plight of what's going on with the gas station. So we will continue um, to discuss this, whether it's the next meeting or two meetings out, probably probably in thirty days since we had to get some of the legal background uh, together um, and do some research with the state, but definitely get it. It's definitely a rough situation. And um, like I said, I'm one of those on the fence with it too. I've always been um, a hard no on this and, you know, starting to figure out what we can do for relief. And I hate to see you guys all struggle like that, but um, anything else from the board, any suggestions other than putting it out thirty days for, to come back for further discussion with some research?
I would just like to see us come to a conclusion on this, that the business owners have a more concrete path for them moving forward. Mine, yeah, I mean, I think we need to, as a board, decide if we're going to, you know, keep looking at this or actually.
Well, and again, this is one avenue of it. Like I said, one of my fears is, okay, um, every smoking vape shop's gonna come in looking for a pouring license for this purpose. Every um, store on Main Street that may not be having a good year is gonna come in looking for a pouring license in addition to what they sell in the store. So whatever we do, it has to be very defined. Um, I wish we were home rules, so we could limit the number of these that we can give away, but um, definitely we need to continue to, to help, see how we can help you guys.
Yes.
I know it's.
We're asking like uh, modifying the class teams, the gas station, the license, ten, adding a second.
Sure, which is the three. Okay. Alright, we will, uh, we appreciate you coming back and being, you know, persistent on this. So um, you have, you're the board and we will continue to discuss this in uh, one month. And in the meantime, work with the village attorneys on getting some of that research together. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Um, next item on the committee, the whole is discussion regarding construction, project management. Uh, this was uh, came on of our last meeting. We talked about the bids for the um property across the street. Uh, it was a request by Kingers, Trustee Pierce and Luther, both to discuss this matter. Um, so the Missouri Times here to answer some questions regarding how that would work. Um, specifically, I believe we'll be talking about this in relation to future projects like Village Hall or Public Works, the Grim Road, and how those projects are structured from a management standpoint. So floor is yours.
Yeah, at least a, a few of you were interested to have more discussion about construction management. So um, I'll do my very best. I, I don't know exactly what what this item was gonna be up, other than more of me answering questions that you may have had about construction management and how, you know, how these projects are delivered. We call it delivery methods. Um, so construction management is a delivery method. But um to my knowledge, the village has been going down the path to deliver projects that we, we typically do design, bid, bill. But I wanted to just open, open it up for whoever has any questions about or however that, how this.
Trustee Luther.
Yeah, I think it came about, because we had had, had discussions internally in some meetings about the potential of hiring either under a temporary basis, a contract basis, or as an employee of the village, a construction manager to oversee the series of projects that we're having going on in the village. We had discussed it, but it would never really went from there. And then you brought up at the last meeting, we, we approved, which basically is construction management for the project. And I guess that's where I'm meeting a little.
Yeah.
Because what, what they, what they're doing under the project across the street seems like construction management, but just for that project. So I was just kinda curious, cause I mean, for every project we have, I mean, we have someone totally different project and, and and I think that's where this originated. And I just wanted to get clarification because I mean, obviously we need that role. Um, you can't do everything. We don't wanna trust the general contractor to oversee everything. So I didn't know if we're still not looking at something on an internal basis, or if we're just gonna stick with the model that we have created for the park or.
Yeah. You know, I, I think there's a little maybe thought going on that having a construction manager either hired or on staff would replace a contract like we have for strand for phase three engineer. It won't. It may reduce it in scope a little bit because there is construction management in it. But I look at construction management as a really good option for an organization that really doesn't know much about construction. Um, you know, I represent the owners, which are mayor and board. Um, know a thing or two about construction and engineering. So I, I, I feel like personally I'm in a very good position. And, and I know folks think I'm, you know, maybe got too much on my plate sometimes, but I, I don't feel that way. The construction management would add a percentage typically, three to five percent. But it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't eliminate the need for the, for the board to still keep its team of architects and engineers on the project. They, they don't stop when the project starts construction. And so what typically happens in construction, contractors can have questions. That question may be, it may need to be answered by a structural engineer, a hydraulic engineer, an architect, you know, different people. So strand co- contract, you gotta realize there's teams of people surveyors, staking, um, there are actual project managers, there are engineers that will have to answer questions and clarify inappropriate shop drawings. So I don't want anyone to think that, hey, we, if we had a construction manager, we would not need our our phase three engineering. And what a construction manager could do is probably be present on site more and necessitate less construction observation, physical presence, watching what's happening on the site and approving of the workmanship. I look at it as and add it, it would add cost to the project. You know, if if it were, let's say, worth three percent cost, but I could eliminate, you know, one percent of my my engineering contract, still going up by two percent on the project. You know, the library kind of did that. They had an owner rep who really managed the construction. And I think it was a good option for them to to go that route, because I really don't think they were in a position to really know you know, were there engineers or architects or contractors gonna take them for a ride or not? So we may be in a unique position, because Dennis and I have done this before and we don't need that. But if we were to hire one, we would still need, you know, we we couldn't replace teams of people that work in the construction business to to deliver these projects, document them, answer the questions, approve, you know, all the different shop drawings. Um, you know, you can never find one person to do all that, which is why I I do like the model of design bid build, uh, because I can, you know, I know that when I need a specialty engineering um, person, you know, a a firm like Strand has all of that. They have the surveyors, the engineers and every just but you know, I I guess I'm trying to answer it as there there's a difference there between construction manager and all that has to happen in in the construction phase. One, you know, it it could help us. I personally don't not asking for that.
See, my my concern isn't necessarily that you need the help, but it's that if, you know, we've had discussions and I don't want that route, which I'm happy with. But what if something happens to you? You know, so it's like, I don't want to slow these projects down. So it's almost like an insurance policy, if you want to stick, but I I don't know if there's, you know, a desire for that one or not, but I just would like to make sure that we don't have anything that slows these projects down, limits our ability to be forward, you know? And that's why, you know, when I, we originally discussed this internally in our books about person or project manager, construction manager, that was working solely for the building. I I saw that as a good thing over all the projects that we had. I know there's going to be spread out and everything else, but you know, the way you presented it last meeting, I I I like that. So I think that's needed as well, but I'm just wondering if there's any need for someone on that a basis that can assist you and be there if you're not. I know it's an added cost, but I understand.
And I'm I'm very cautious, mainly by necessity, but um, know that I'm getting some, I am getting some help. We are interviewing for assistant village administrator. That my hope is that 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 person will be able to immediately take some things off of my plate to to give me you know, e- even more time to focus on these projects that are coming and that there's other projects we haven't started yet, you know, there's other things that we have.
Well, that's what I mean. We have a lot on our plate.
So I just, you know, just to the point of, you know, what my capacity is. Yeah, the what I'm envisioning with the assistant village administrator is gonna, is gonna really help me out and to, you know, be able to 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 handle what's what's coming down. But yeah, you know, I I I I see where a lot of organizations go this route. I've had had a lot of uh, interests, the people that see what we're we're looking at and wanna, you know, wanna be our construction managers and wanna be our owners reps and there's even a new delivery method. Passion, it would, um, they've come up with an even different delivery method that I'm gonna explore and see if it's right. And some of them could speed up a project, but you don't, you don't go out to bid. You know, on some of these things, they they, there's a loop, I don't know, I would call it loop, it's somehow legal where and I forgot what that, forgive me, but I forgot the name of the delivery method. Passion, you know, but you know, you kind of just hire them and they deliver the project to you and you really don't know how it happens. So it's foreign to me and I guess I'm a creature habit. I like to open bids, go out to bid, do this all in the public. You you know, we have to do this all according to oil and the state statutes and, you know, allow fair bid fitting, fair bidding. Um, I'm I'm not sure how this other delivery method accomplishes that. You kind of have to trust what what that person is bringing to the table, and if they're gonna deliver a project somehow cheaper than then we can do it with a design bid build, which is typically the cheapest way to go, because you introduce competition. So I, you know, it's it's a very interesting discussion. I think you could find people, you know, probably you know, if you had ten people, I think you could have five that make very good arguments for doing construction management type projects, and I think you could probably have five that'll make arguments to not do it. A lot of the contractors are doing, it's very lucrative, you know? Bowler, they'll certainly, even if they're not selected as a contractor, will be happy to do your construction management. Our other bidder, you know, said, hey, I I wouldn't do it, but if you do want a construction manager, Jim, I'm I'm right there for you, because it's very lucrative. Because we're taking a couple of these large dollar projects. But the owner still, you know, to me, the best way to deliver projects for the owner to stay very active and involved, you know, the worst that can happen is the owner's paying attention. Um, and have a have an engaged um, contractor. Um, and and to have, hopefully, our our designers have put together drawings that don't have a lot of problems with it. And I believe that that's that's what I strive to have happen here. I'm not anticipating a lot of issues, you know, but that's, we have a good, good set of design drawings, good contractor, a present engaged owner. That's typically the cheapest, to me, cheapest best way to go.
I mean, I have full confidence in you to pull this off. I'm just worried that we get a.
Thank you, uh, trustee Neil, trustee Pierce.
Um, I mean, I'll be very honest, I've had several people that are in this community bill that will be your construction manager.
Me too.
I'm sure. Yeah, everybody that comes talks to me about stuff or comes and stands at that podium, I always figure what's in it for them? What what are they aiming for? As you say, they're they're looking for a cut. You know, it's a lucrative cut. You probably see several families and and keep a couple of businesses open, type of cuts. Um, so I I I look at that, but I think the concern and interest, the hearts hitting on it. And and I'm not sold. I wonder if they're looking for it. Um, but if overextended, you you end up hiring an assistant who's learning the system here and you think it's funny. I don't think that's what we're looking for. You would be the village administrator. And have the the assistant help you with your job as a village administrator. How does having all these big projects impact you? So I want to be sure that you're okay with the impact it's been having, because you're already in here.
I I'm aware of it. Um yeah, I appreciate the concern and and the the conversation here. Um you know, I'm I'm not planning any any extensive trips this year, you know, because this this is gonna be a lot of activity that I don't need to be present for, that I want, I want to be present. They may, they they may get sick of seeing me out there, you know, before long. But I I enjoy this phase. I really like this phase, you know, the designing is fun, but I I think we need to get to deliver the physical project is the exciting part, so. Um, I'll throw my hand up if I need help. I won't be free. If I if I feel like it's getting too much, I'll I'm I'm not too proud to say, hey, I'm gonna need somebody to help out. But right now, as things are progressing, I think I'd be okay.
And one more question, if they start mid-July, late July, are they still the contractor next year?
I think it's gonna be tough. We're gonna get some schedules, so I'm gonna learn a lot. Very interested to see what comes to the table tomorrow in terms of our construction meeting with schedules. Which which contractor, I I, you know, the subs are still getting identified and selected, so I'm very interested to see who who really is on this team.
I'm ready to go out towards the shoulders myself. Uh, trustee Mason.
Your assist, what are we talking about assistants? For Jim? You know that Paul has said we're lucky at Jim, because he's got four or two hats. I think you gotta separate the hats. I think we gotta get uh, someone that were on the engineering show and Jim, the administrator show. Said that for a long time. I think we had a lot of infrastructure that wasn't, he looked bad, Jim doesn't have time to do that. We want to sit there, hire HR green, spend the money, and if we waste money outside we're we're losing it here. You don't have to plan to, because they're ready to structure. So he's wearing two hats, so we're not, we're not paying up stuff, that's our structure. Well, just take that into consideration.
Trustee Peterson.
I trust Jim is going to tell us when we need to make that move, when we need to hire someone. Like, was the fact that he's gonna let us know? I still trust the fact that he'll let us know.
I think, um, I think, I think, um, will be helpful going forward, this is. I know Jim, you've talked about the different types of delivery methods, okay? And so maybe between now and our next quarterly meeting, we come up with, hey, these are the two kind of organizational charges you see in these projects. It would be in those roles. And then we, at our next quarterly meeting or at a cow, kind of come up with the philosophy, like, okay, that's how we're gonna attack these projects, you know, and then I think that's so we're consistent on these and, you know, midstream, we're not switching course, but I have confidence in you, especially, you know, with this park project. Um, it'll be interesting to see um, with these interviews, which uh, assistant administrator comes in, what their skill sets are. Um, I know you're gonna miss the HR function of the village administration, as would I. Um, but yeah, I I appreciate this, but again, next, if we can put together those three alternatives of how they're delivered in organizational charity, that might be helpful. Is, that's kind of how I'm trying to visualize it too. Anything else for Jim on this? I do, um, that brings us to Alaska, their item on the agenda, which, um, before we get there, I'm not trying to uh shorten the meeting by any means, but I feel like we are, um we can discuss this, but I feel like we're one day premature on this item. Uh, we were supposed to have the construction meeting last week and they were waiting for the uh, DEO to get the approval. So until we got their approval, we couldn't have the the meeting. I feel like with these al- alternates, we're gonna learn a lot more about them tomorrow, so we can discuss something all night tonight and it'd be moved. So, um you know, I would suggest maybe, um, like we've done in the past, each trustee sent Jim a list of the ones they would say yes or no on, and then, um, and even if by tomorrow at the the bid meeting or the pre-con meeting, and then put this on the count next time, we say, okay, the contractor says it's gonna be you know, we're eliminating this, but they add this for X, Y, and Z. So I think we're one day earlier. They were just talking about something that is very uh, subjective at this point. Tomorrow becomes a lot more subjective.
I I would just hope that, um, you give me just a little time to just make sure everybody understands what the alternatives.
Yeah, why do you, why do, why, why, why do you do that? Yeah, because I know, um, I know the big one, um, and I know trustee McNeil news board member, um, with the water feature. Why don't you just give a quick highlight of what each one is? Um, any questions on that? And then we'll keep this on for the next cow, because we're gonna have a lot more information tomorrow. And um, cost and potential cuts and potential additions, so.
So the 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 band link work features a water feature, it's two hundred and fifteen is the alternate. Next slide. Okay, so you see where the splash pad is. That that was, that wasn't very intentional, but community asked for that. And that was something that scored really high, and we decided it was an element we wanted to definitely include. Just below it, in the stone outcroppings, there is a uh, two pools, two small pools. Mary, could you point to it? So there's some jets that are gonna create some, a little bit of jet action in those two pools. This this is the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar feature. And it may spill into the next pool, it does not reach the creek, gets sent to, sent to waste. And um, you know, it was not part of, you know, this was something that kind of just appeared from these landscape architects. You know, uh, it was basically said, hey, what about this? Um, so it, it would be a uh, ancillary water feature that do I think it would look okay? Yeah, it's it's purely aesthetic. It doesn't really have a function. Um, I think my personal opinion, we can do without it. It was another part of the program, and there's a lot going on at this park, and I I think the park's gonna be just fine, the creek is gonna be just fine without. Um, so again, purely aesthetic feature.
Is it possible to know what it would look like, didn't have that, with the ponds, those little pools still be there?
No, no, it would just be some rock or. Maybe it would, yeah, it it would just, that area would get filled in with some taller grasses. So you, you know, the the the.
Prairie rock that would be.
It's gonna look like the rest of it with stone outcroppings and the prairie grasses that I hope are growing nice and healthy, right? So yeah, that's 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 the band link brook. Let's just move on. Be the village administrator, construction manager. Oh, thank you. Okay, so we bid an alternate to swap out the stone. Originally, they wanted to use fondulac stone.
The the one they wanted to use, I was picturing, of course, is that that's, they wanted to use one on the bottom, not the one on the top.
Yeah, let's let's go to the next slide. Yeah, they started with the fondulac on the bottom. And um, we we saw that there was eighty thousand dollar cost savings to switch to the stone on the top. They will serve the same purpose for all intents and purposes.
What's it different?
They're different, quarried quarried from different locations.
So just the coloring and look?
They're slightly different, yeah.
I like the line of tapping.
It has more color. Does have more color, but they'll serve the exact same purpose. So kudos to the design team for recognizing that there could be some cost savings by looking at a different product. You know, this, that kind of kept the landscape architects in check, you know?
But the the bid package included the top one, Matt. We would be adding the.
You want to go with the bottom one, yeah, we'd be adding eighty thousand dollars. Not recommending we take that option. I don't know that anyone's interested, but there's twenty thousand dollar savings to push the construction end date to September first.
It's gonna be there anyways, but that'll make it December first, so.
Yeah, I bet it didn't think that we had any interest in. Hey, cafe roof is an extension. Ninety seven thousand. That would be for that overhang that should that shoots out. Um, so again, it was part of the original program. It's a service building. It was intended to be, you know, mechanical bathroom, cafe or concessions. It was never, this this was, you know, midstream in design, we kind of, we started looking at, you know, is this something we want to look at? We bid it as an alternative.
The, see, what the issue I need is, I need to see what it looks like for me, going down the bit.
Okay.
Given.
There is. That's that's what is on the base bid. So if we go, you know, the, and and to me, that's the proper scale and what I was envisioning this building to be, um, I I I think it grew, it grew the conversation when we started talking about kublas and coverings and enclosures and it, you know, to me, um, sometimes less is more. It, you know, to me, um, sometimes less is more.
When you go back, then the one, then drove by two rivers, they're going the same almost. There, it really looks diminished. Just to see it looks to.
It really was never intended to be a focal point of this park. It it was really a service building. I I, you know, once the kubla goes on, I think your eye, it's gonna be taller, I think your eye's gonna be drawn to it, and, you know, I. The intention was never to have the bathroom be the focal point. The intention is to have a service building in a nice area to serve, you know, have some tables and a nice patio in front of it, where you can sit and look at the creek and the bridge and. You know, could keep an eye on what's happening, maybe with your your kids and splash pad, and have, you know. And have some tables and chairs so you can enjoy, enjoy some outdoor, um, concessions. Um, so that, you know, that. You know, the, and for that reason. You know, I I'm not record, my opinion is we don't need those features, but I know the board, I definitely drove that conversation and and board gets what board wants. The, um, the the kubla is gonna drive, make your eye drawn to that area, um, and the roof extension, I I think. The building starts to get bigger, bigger into the space, and and I just don't think the juice is worth the squeeze on on that. But, um. You know, this, this is really important, you know, I'm not known as the aesthetic, uh, person, I'm more of a functional.
Roof is ninety seven, fifty degree. So, you know. I hate to be the nego jelly again, and I, I feel like I've wasted the last three months. Spent all this time discussing all this stuff and planning it, and saying, this is what we're gonna have, and when we turn around, it's like, oh, this was cut, this was cut, that was cut, this was cut. Why did I spend the time discussing? So, I know what's gonna go forward, we're gonna end up with a service building, we're gonna, you know, have the land, which I think is a brilliant idea. You know, but everything else. Surveying, what do you want?
You just said, you just said, the other town is building it for less.
Yeah, but they're building this small little structure that to make.
Well, now you wanna build a bigger structure for, they're contradicting yourself.
Well, let's, um. But all I'm saying is, the board, the board came to the decision, and then we get this package, and all, all this stuff was cut as alternatives. I feel like I wasted two or three months of my life discussing this thing. I thought we asked for the. Yeah, for the alternatives, so that we determine based on the budget, whether we can afford to have the extension or the house. I mean, at this point, I mean, we're, budget is so much higher than we were discussing at the time, so now it's a matter of, do we want to. Add these features for another hundred and thirty thousand or not, and and at this point, we should be looking at this budget, trying to make. Cost conscious decision, because we're already way over where we thought we were. We're gonna be rich, because we're not aiming to go into all the gas data, we got all the barriers, made a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a year for us taxes. We're gonna be rich.
Um, so I think you guys, do you, do you understand?
Yeah, we understand.
Understand what the options are. So I think, again, I would confidentially, whatever, send it, uh, send Jim your preferences on this. I know my.
We're here to make these decisions.
But, or however you wanna do that, but I, we're not, we, we can't make, uh. Educated decisions today until we get that around the bowler tomorrow ago, cause, you know. That's where we start cutting, slicing on other items. I personally rather spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more on making the building a bigger, better thing, spend two hundred and fifty. Large hot tub.
Well, I'm not gonna say it, I think, I think you're, we either go big, or we don't, we don't do either. We're gonna do the kubla and the extension, or we'll do chair, one or the other. We got, we got one bite of the apple here, yes, as as we all know. Concrete that costs seventy five dollars a yard five years ago is now two hundred, three hundred dollars a yard. Because of the inflation that's in this, and COVID, and all that other stuff. We got one bite of the apple here, one thing or not, it's done. And we we sit here five or ten years ago, hadn't really even been nice, we had a kubla on there. It'll be too late, so we need to make this decision now, whether we're gonna go forth and bite the apple and just suffer the pain, it's already so far over. But we were expecting at least a twenty seven million dollars then. Just get it done and do it right. Quit trying to put the chisel through the pricing.
All right, um, two weeks to stay down there, and then we'll get the, uh, report, but, uh. It's good to know what these are specifically. All right, where the heck are we? Okay, any other? Besides new chairs. All right, um, any requests for executive session? None? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Peterson, all in favor? Any opposed?